Good evening and welcome to White Marsh Township's Board of Supervisors meeting, which is being conducted through Zoom tonight and streamed to White Marsh TV, which is Comcast Channel 965 and Verizon Channel 46. I'm Laura Boyle-Nestor, Chair of the White Marsh Board of Supervisors, and I would like to call the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisor Meeting of April 9th, 2020 at 5:00 PM to order. I don't have my gavel here, so. J.C., would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To America.
To the republic.
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 Which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, free, just.
Liberty, justice, law.
Justice.
Justice.
Thank you so much. Before we get into our specific announcements, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of pause and reflect on where we are. I want to thank, and I'm sure many of us tonight will thank, all of our first responders. But I also want to thank everybody who is really following the governor's orders and our county officials' orders and staying home and protecting yourself and your family and everybody else by doing that. Wearing masks when you're out and really adhering to the guidelines. That's so important. And reaching out to others for help. On our website, we have ways to connect to our email letters that go out daily that give information about various activities. But also on our website, we have information about mental health, support systems, unemployment, county, state information. So if you haven't thus far signed up for our eletters, please do that. We are really wanting to make sure that we're helping everybody. I also want to thank our staff. These past few weeks for all of us have been unprecedented. Behind the scenes, even though we've not met in March, we've been working very hard and communicating constantly. Rick and Chris Ward and Nate are our board members. All of the department heads have been working really, really closely to make things continue to run, essential services. And I appreciate everybody's patience in us, you know, waiting until we can do a meeting like we have tonight. I do realize it's a holiday for many people, and I appreciate that everybody is coming together at this time. We did make it an earlier time so that we can accommodate, you know, Zoom celebrations later on. But we do have some important matters to get through. I also want to do a shout out to our Park and Rec Department. They have been phenomenal. Tom Blumstrom and his staff has been so critically important and helpful in getting out information to help support families at home with activities and activities for adults to do. I saw Pilates classes today, so really, really stepping up in a time of need. So thank you so much for that. And I'd like to turn the meeting over now to our solicitor, Mr. Kilkeny, can kind of review for us how it is we are legally able to be doing all that we're doing tonight.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Boyle-Nestor. I'm Sean Kilkeny. I'm the township solicitor. We're doing this meeting this night, this evening, based on both the township, the county, and the governor's emergency declarations. Because of that, under the Emergency Management Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we are able to relax requirements that a physical forum be present at a White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We also consulted with several organizations that deal with municipalities in the Commonwealth, them being PSATs, which deal with township supervisors, and the Boroughs Association. And they have both given guidance that municipalities shall and can have Zoom meetings or equivalent technology, provided that everyone can hear and understand what's going on and there be an opportunity for reasonable public comment to occur. Reasonable public comment can occur for this meeting in a couple different ways. You can obviously send a message related to this, or you could have emailed the township beforehand, and that comment would be read and understood. These are extraordinary times and these are extraordinary measures. Also, too, there's a bill in the House and the Senate that would codify all of this. It is actually passed the Senate yesterday. A different form of it passed the House a week ago. And now they're going to work out any of the kind of disagreements. Hopefully, both pass it and have the governor sign it to codify all of this. But that being said, White Marsh Township and many other townships throughout the Commonwealth have used this forum. We are taking public action, moving forward with township business. And this has been opined on, not only by my office, but PSATs, the Boroughs Association, and actually the Commonwealth's Office of Record Records. I think that, subject to any kind of questions, that would explain how we're having this meeting tonight. Supervisor Boyle-Nestor.
Thank you so much, Sean. I appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it over to our township manager, Rick Mellor. If you could give us an update, Rick, on what's been happening lately and how things are going.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Nestor, and good evening, board members and staff. We are continuing to operate in some extraordinary times here at the township under the Governor's Stay-at-Home order. We are working with our federal, state, and local partners throughout this entire process in terms of the information that they are providing. This is really led on a local level by Montgomery County Emergency Operations Center and the Health Department and the county commissioners have been providing, as you see on the news, daily briefings. We've been receiving additional information from the Montgomery County Emergency Operations Center. In addition, all the department heads are part of vast networks in each of our disciplines. We've been relying heavily in talking to our colleagues, our neighbors, about this situation because, as we all know, no one has been through this before. And the way this is going, it is moving, and it is moving rapidly. Almost on a daily, a few weeks ago, it felt like an hourly basis that we would have new information, be trying to process that, be trying to get that information out, one, from an organizational standpoint, and our staff, and then as well as that information being pushed out to the public, to our community, both residential and our business community. So we've been going through with our website, our social media. You have, if anyone, I hope everybody is part of our e-newsletter, that as this started a few weeks ago, we were putting out information daily because it was changing so often. We've kind of slowed that down a little bit because we are, you know, kind of in a little bit of a rhythm. That's coming out. It came out, there was one that came out today that many of you who are signed up for saw. And we will continue to put out information as it becomes available to us. The township was closed to the public effective on March 18th, and it will continue to remain closed to the public through April 30th. Nonessential personnel are working remotely. That took effect on March 24th, and this will remain in effect until April 30th. Nonlegislative boards and commission meetings have been canceled through April 30th. The township has put in place our Continuity Operation Plan. That means that all township personnel are available through email, phone. We are still connected. We have, anything that goes into our main number is transferred over to the police desk. So there is still a live person that is answering those phone calls and forwarding any information to the appropriate person and staff. Department heads, they automatically have their emails forwarded, their phones, their phone calls that would go to their desk are forwarded to their cell phones. So they are still working and answering questions. All the department heads and as well as kind of our middle staff, they all have VPN access. So we all have access to our files when we're working remotely. We also have individuals who are coming into the office periodically. Obviously, we are recognizing social distancing from that standpoint. We're not having, you know, whole departments come in. But throughout the day and throughout the week, sporadically, staff will come in to just pick up files or to check the mail and make sure that we're moving things forward. From a staff perspective, department heads, we're meeting, we're using this Zoom feature twice a week for staff meetings so that we are staying in touch from an organizational standpoint and making sure that we're talking and collaborating from that perspective. Because, as I mentioned, our networks that we're all part of are all having these ideas, and then we bring them together, we discuss them, and then we figure out the best way to move forward, considering the state that we are in. There's a couple, I know Supervisor Nestor mentioned some thank yous. I'd also, if I could, just mention some thank yous to at least my White Marsh team in terms of moving this forward. On this call, you see Nate Critman. I have to give a thank you to him and his staff of Gwen and Connie. We are, as a second-class township, Nate is the tax collector. We and his staff are coming in daily to process tax payments, to process any invoices that we receive. And to, obviously, important to staff is making sure payroll continues on. So we've been doing that. We've been doing that really since the beginning. We've put in some social distancing measures. People can pay their taxes now through a lockbox that's in the vestibule of the township. That is the main door to the rear of the township that people could come in. On the left, there is a drop box that any resident or business can place their tax bill. Then we will mail them their receipt. So that has really helped us and really made our staff safe so that they're not dealing one-on-one there with the public. So I appreciate Nate and his team in working through all of this. With regards to our parks and recreation, you did hear Supervisor Nestor mention Tom Blumstrom and his team. They have done an exceptional job. And as we all know, we are staying at home, and we all get a little stir-crazy or bored or monotonous, Groundhog Day, whatever you want to call it. Tom has really been creative, and his team and employees there have really been creative in finding in-home activities. It's something that is getting recognized, not just on the local level, but all the way up to the state level as partners in the park and recreation world have linked to White Marsh Township for those activities. So that's really been an extraordinary job in what is a difficult situation and canceling some of what we all look forward to, some of our big events that we have in this community. Our public works, Jack Fields and his team, they are still in and working, albeit on a modified schedule with only having certain smaller personnel groups that are coming in on a daily basis. We still need to service our police cars and other vehicles, and we also need to make sure that the township is, the infrastructure is in good working order. So they are still coming in, working hard, and maintaining the infrastructure in the township. Certainly, Sean Halbens on this call. Sean has been very instrumental in helping with the communications with the township, making sure that all of our information, working with our communications consultant, Tom Gally from Gally Murray. And we've been pushing out a lot of that information, making sure that the website is up to date as we get this information that, you know, keeps coming to us and moving at such a rapid pace. Building and codes, that's certainly been a challenge with the governor's order because, obviously, there's a list of activities that can happen, and then there's a list of activities that cannot happen. So we, and Bob Stabinski and his team, he's been working with his state association as they get questions and trying to understand how other municipalities are handling those types of questions. Because, again, this is unprecedented. This is the first time. We're trying to interpret these things as best as possible and in the fairest manner. Planning and zoning, they are still Charlie-Gotten Plan, and his team is still answering phone calls. They are still talking with regards to permits and questions that folks have in that manner and how they apply for, I was getting ready to apply for a zoning hearing board application or whatever that might be. So that staff, the staff is continuing to work very, very hard in that respect. Nick Weaver, our fire marshal, has been in constant communication with our emergency service personnel, working very closely with Chief Ward, also with Chief Warner of the White Marsh Community Ambulance, with Chief Schwartz of Barron Hill Volunteer Fire Company, and Chief Shoemaker of Spring Mill Fire Company. So in communication with them and working and coordinating their needs as well. Finally, we have Chief Ward, who's on this call, who I'm going to turn this over to in a second. And really, you know, it's another group that is obviously essential, continuing to work, continuing to serve and answer the calls that we have and receive from the public. Has been really good, too, in working with Nick and making sure that our staff have, you know, personal protective wear when we're dealing with the public. So they're dealing with the public even when our personnel are dealing with the public. So they've been really good in working through all of that and trying to provide us with the necessary resources that we needed to have. So and certainly, I want to thank the board and their support. I know that this is very unique in how we're communicating and trying to make sure that we're getting information out there. And I do appreciate your patience as we get information out there to you all. So hopefully, that, you know, is working out, and we're continuing to make improvements. And I'll say that to the board and the public. We've never been through this. We're trying to figure this out. We're trying to continue government. We want to be here, and we will be here to serve the residents and businesses in this community. That's our job. That's our mission. That will continue through this. And we just are trying to find different ways. You know, everyone's heard the term, quote-unquote, "the new norm." And we're trying to figure that new norm out and make sure that we're doing what we need to do to the best of our ability, considering the situation we're in. So that's where we are operationally from a township standpoint. I've asked Chief Ward to be part of this call so that, as I mentioned, he is leading the White Marsh Police Officers and Police Department through this. And I wanted to turn it over to the chief to give a report on operationally from the police department's perspective. So if I could, Chair Nestor, I'll turn it over to Chief Ward.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Ward. I'm the chief of police here in White Marsh Township. First and foremost, let me let everybody know that not only is the police department, but all of our emergency services, our fire company and our ambulance, we are operating at 100%. Every call, any call for service that any of us will receive, we are responding to, just as we were before this all started. Now, we've started some new programs. We're doing as much social distancing as possible, but we will still do the job that needs to be done in the situation. We are, like I said, handling things differently, trying to have less contact and keeping our distance, handling things by phone, email, and other things. But if you need the police, the fire, or the ambulance, we're coming. We will be there to help you with any problem you will have. Just to echo Mr. Mellor, we are working very closely with Chief Schwartz and Barron Hill Fire Company, Chief Shoemaker at Spring Mill Fire Company. And Chief Warner has really been a godsend with White Marsh Ambulance, helping us all understand the medical side of this pandemic that we're dealing with and helping us to make sure that we are staying safe with our personal protective equipment that we have to wear at certain times. Some people may be put off by it, but we're trying to protect our first responders at every turn that we can. But we will be there if you need us. On the police side, we're very fortunate. Our community has responded very well to the governor's orders. Of course, there's always some problems, but the orders that have come down from the governor are interpretable. Sometimes we have to help people interpret them, make sure they understand them, and also suggest that they maybe choose another course. We are not here to stop people from doing things, but try to educate them for the betterment of all of us. We're working very closely with our Building and Codes Division and zoning to make sure that we follow up on businesses that should and should not be operating. We are here 24/7, so a lot of times the calls come to us. But I want to assure everybody, if you call the township, especially for emergency services, we will respond. And it has become our responsibility right now. If you call for any part of the township, someone in the police department will answer the phone. We will make sure that you are guided to the answer or the person you need to speak to. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief Ward. Let's head over to Fran. And I think you have some announcements to share, Fran.
Yes, thank you. So a reminder to all residents to please complete your 2020 census if you haven't already. So far, roughly 56% of Montgomery County residents have replied. If you have any questions about the census, their call center is open 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily. The number is 844-330-2020. The contractors working at the intersection of Joshua Road and Stent Avenue have been issued a waiver by the state to continue working. Work will resume on or about April 20th. Residents can drop off tax payments at the township building in our main lobby, police entrance side. A secure drop box has been installed and is actively monitored by White Marsh Police. Finally, and you're going to hear a lot of thank yous this evening, I'm sure, but we would really like to thank our dedicated first responders for their ongoing service during this pandemic, as well as our local businesses and residents who have found numerous ways to help those less fortunate during these past few weeks. Please reach out to your loved ones and continue to stay calm, stay safe, and stay home. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McCusker. We are going to move on. We have no public hearings on our agenda tonight, so I'm going to go into the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from February 27th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Very good.
Let me just make sure I'm recording this correctly. We have Supervisor McCusker and then Supervisor Manuel. Was it your second, Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe we could do a hand raise? Would that help, too, Rick?
Yes, I just want to make sure I get it accurately for the minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is all new territory.
Yep.
Do we have any board comment on the minutes? No? Any public comment? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We don't have any public board discussion items, so I'm going to move right on down into our resolutions. And these are broken up. We have a few emergency resolutions here. So I'll begin with the first one and turn it over to you, Mr. Mellor. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-09 ratifying the local declaration of disaster pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended due to the COVID-19 pandemic in White Marsh Township on March 7th, 2020 for a period of seven days?
So moved.
Second.
I'll go Supervisor Toll and then Supervisor McCusker.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Nestor. So as part of the COVID-19 pandemic, municipalities under the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code can declare a local disaster declaration. And that is part of the township's emergency operation plan in which it states that the township manager is responsible to declare a local emergency, which in consultation with the Board of Supervisors, took place on March, from March 7th, for a period of seven days. That is per the code that it is seven days unless it is extended by the Board of Supervisors. So I'll go through basically each one after you say which, as far as the dates. But to explain what the local emergency disaster declaration, it allows us the performance of public works as may be required to meet a public emergency, which in this case is the COVID-19 pandemic, without regard to those time-consuming procedures and formalities normally were required to and prescribed by law. Those items include entering into contracts, the occurring of obligations, employment of temporary workers, rental of equipment, purchase of supplies and materials, the levying of taxes, and appropriation and expenditure of public funds. We, at this point, have not gone into any or foregone any bidding requirements for the purchase of materials. That's not to say that we aren't going to have materials or PPEs and things of the like that we are purchasing specific due to this pandemic. Those are then part, are then made part of an entire spreadsheet. They are given to FEMA, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, which then is working with FEMA, the federal agency, in an effort to have funds reimbursed back to the township. So that is, in order for us to be eligible for those funds, we must have the emergency declaration declared, approved. In this case, we're allowed to have it declared and then subsequently ratified by the Board of Supervisors. So that is what it allows us to do. Again, it is just really to relax the procedures and the formalities that are usually necessary and can be time-consuming because in an emergency, you need things here and you need things now. Again, this is really, from a large expenditure standpoint, we don't really foresee anything at this point large. The county and the health agencies, obviously, they've no doubt had some major, large expenditures. At this point, ours have been nominal, but still, as they add up, we're tracking those in order to allow us to seek reimbursement when all of this is said and done.
Excellent. Thank you. And we have a few of these to ratify because we were going incrementally through this time period. So we have a couple more of these to do. Are there, is there any board comment on this? Any public comment?
I'm not sure we're taking public comment. How are we taking public comment?
I think we were looking at chat, and I don't know if Rick got any email updates.
I have not received any emails related to this or related to any of these agenda items, no.
Okay.
And I'm not receiving any public comment or messages to me either.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mellor, please call the roll.
Okay, let's see if I can try and do this in the order of how we usually sit. Supervisor McCusker.
Yes.
Supervisor Toll.
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel.
Yes.
Am I getting this right? Supervisor Drazner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just making sure, trying to get it, keep it in order.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion passes. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-10 ratifying the local declaration of disaster pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended due to the COVID-19 pandemic in White Marsh Township on March 14th, 2020 for a period of 30 days?
So moved. Second.
All right, I'm going to go with Supervisor Drazner and then Supervisor McCusker.
So moved. Second.
All right, I'm going to go with Supervisor Drauzner and then Supervisor McCusker. Chair Nester, this is same thing. We initially did it for seven days. This is extending it out for 30 days to allow us, at the time, more time so we weren't doing this, you know, week by week. So under the provisions of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, we're allowed to extend it out per the board's authorization. So we did that. In this case, we again are ratifying an action that was already taken due to the emergency declaration.
Excellent. Is there any board comment? No, and no chats, no public comment, Rick?
I'm not receiving any public comment or any chat from that.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Okay. Supervisor McCusker.
Yes.
Supervisor Toll.
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel.
Yes.
Supervisor Drauzner.
Yes.
Chair Nester.
Yes. Excellent, thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the final of the declarations, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-11 approving the local declaration of disaster pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended due to the COVID-19 pandemic in White Marsh Township on April 9, 2020 for an indefinite period?
So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Toll and Supervisor Drauzner. Okay, Chair Nester, this is what we and our partner, our municipal partners have been doing is because this is unlike, you know, a winter storm or a major flooding event when you can kind of see that, okay, if it snows, we know it's going to be over here, or, you know, a major flooding event, we know it's going to last till here. This, you know, we're not sure. We just don't know how long this is going to last. So as long as there is a disaster declaration on the federal and state level, this will still continue to be in place. Once that is lifted, this goes away, and we are operating under the same provisions of all of the laws of the land. So again, this protects us, it gives us certain abilities. We don't foresee us using them much more than what we're going to be doing tonight. And at least on, anytime we have a meeting that we're still under this declaration, I will certainly advise the board, as well as the public, of anything that we have, that has been triggered due to this disaster declaration.
Thank you. And, Mr. Miller, is there a need for another resolution to have this be expired or canceled? You know, whenever we come to an end date, how does that wrap up?
I guess we could do that when there is a time, we could do that. I don't know that we've ever had a disaster declaration that's infinite.
Indefinite.
And indefinite, so obviously, this is going to end at some point. And I think it's something that, you know, I could certainly confer with the solicitor's office as we are monitoring this pandemic and certainly the disaster declarations on the federal and state level, then we can, you know, at some point, even if it's before a meeting, we could end it and then ratify it, similar to what we're doing here. But I just think instead of trying to continue to have resolution after resolution after resolution, this is what our municipal partners and those at the EOC are recommending considering the situation that we are in. And again, I'll make sure this is part of, as long as we're under this, I will make sure this is part of my report to the board and public anytime we have a board supervisors meeting.
Excellent. Is there any other board comment? Any public comment come in? No.
No.
Okay, Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drauzner?
Yes.
Chair Nester.
Yes. Great, all right, well, that wraps up our local emergency disaster declaration, and we'll move into taxes. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-12 extending pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501D of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, the deadline to pay township real estate taxes eligible to receive the 2% discount from April 30, 2020 to May 31, 2020, and the deadline to pay township real estate taxes at face value from June 30, 2020 to August 31, 2020 as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic?
So moved. Second.
Supervisor Manuel and Supervisor McCusker. Okay. Thank you, Chair Nester. This is, obviously, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and as everyone sees on the news, the vast unemployment that has been caused of this, we have been approached by Montgomery County, and as you know, being the tax collector, and Nate Crittman being our tax collector, our finance director, the township collects both the township real estate tax and the Montgomery County real estate tax. And the deadline for the 2% discount was set to be on May, I'm sorry, on April the 31st. As a result, they've asked that to be extended. We are proposing that it be extended until May the 31st. Then we have the face period, the face period, which is the actual amount on your tax on your real estate township and county real estate tax bill was set to be due on June the 30th. Since there is only a small window, one month, we also thought that extending that out and going with the county's recommendation till August 31st, again, give some people some relief as we are going through what are some certainly difficult economic times, not just in White Marsh but across this country. So the township typically collects about 85% of the budgeted 3.6 million in real estate taxes during the discount period. Why is that? It is because the majority of people escrow their real estate taxes as part of their mortgage. The large mortgage lenders are still sending the mortgage payment, the, excuse me, the real estate tax payments to the township. As I mentioned in my opening, our finance team is there and processing those tax payments and depositing those checks and sending out receipts to those folks. So we feel that in doing this, it is not going to be a major impact to the township's budget, and it certainly will help those that are facing some difficult economic times and giving some people some additional time before the tax bills go into, after August 31st, which would be a penalty period. So this really looks at extending the discount period of 2% to the end of May, and then the face amount to August 31st, providing that relief.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for that summary. I think it's, you know, I've been receiving personally a lot of questions about this, and I am glad that this is something that we are considering tonight. Is there any other board comment?
So just to be clear, Rick, the county also has extended its deadlines so that ours will now be consistent with theirs.
That is correct.
Okay, any public comment come in on that?
Did we figure out a way to take public comment? It seems like we're.
The chat, it's not on here.
Right, so I don't know.
I believe, if I could say, I believe Nate's worked on the comment. If you could, Nate, just, he's kind of our in-house, in Zoom IT person here with this. Nate?
We did re-enable the chat feature. There was an issue with setting it up, so it should show back up. However, for those that cannot see it, it was allowed for public comment, for individuals to be able to unmute themselves to vocalize their comment. At this time, we do have it open, so we can see if a mic's trying to be activated. In the event that somebody unactivates, makes their comment, we do have the ability to remute it if it stays open for too long. But yes, the public does have the ability to unmute themselves.
Excellent, thank you. And we haven't received anything?
As of yet, I don't have anyone unmuting themselves. We're keeping a view on the list of participants, and the moment they submit the request to unmute themselves, it's a button click on their end for those that have called in, and it's also a button click on for those who are doing via a device of any nature, be it a tablet, phone, or a laptop, and they have been granted the right to unmute themselves so that their vocalization can come through.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, Mr. Miller, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drauzner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Excellent, thank you. I'm relieved to have that. Moving on to the next tax item, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-13 extending pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501D of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code, the deadline for payment of the township business privileged taxes from May 1, 2020 to July 15, 2020 as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we'll go with Supervisor McCusker and Supervisor Manuel. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Nester. Again, this is looking at our business community and for many of the reasons that I stated with regards to the real estate tax, it falls in line here. And in talking with our surrounding municipalities, we're just trying to be consistent with some dates that have been moved back to July 15. That is, Berchheimer has extended the filing of the earned income tax. You've seen from the federal level that April 15 date was moved for income tax submission to July 15. So we just want to be, one, give the business folks some ability and some extra time, and two, is be consistent on the day so that they're not trying to juggle 35 different dates on when they need to submit their tax information. So we're trying to be consistent there. We've been talking again to our surrounding municipalities, and those that do have the business privilege tax are considering, or in some cases have enacted, the same extension to July 15.
Excellent, thank you. Nate, do you have any comments, finance-wise, on this?
No, I'm in agreement with this, I think. This was brought forth by our township manager, our Miller, to help provide relief to our residents by direction of the board, and I think this was a good decision, and it shows our support. So I'm in full agreement.
Thanks for your comments. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments come in? No. Okay, Mr. Miller, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drauzner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. That's great to have that motion adopted as well. So now we're going to go into motions, and do I have a motion to allocate $990.27 in donations received from the spring shredding day to White Marsh Community Ambulance Association for volunteering their services and coordinating activities on the day of the event?
So moved.
Second.
Go with Supervisor Toll and Supervisor Manuel. Okay.
Drauzner's not ringing the bell today.
Thought I was in there.
He's asleep at the wheel.
You get a replay?
No, we have a couple more, you still have time.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, can you share about this, please?
Sure, thank you, Chair Nester. We had our annual shredding day, which was on Saturday, March 7, in the Miles Park parking lot. That was from 8 to 12. We, it was extremely well-attended. Parks and Rec Department partnered with the White Marsh Community Ambulance Association, and they basically filled the trucks that were available on that day. From an environmental standpoint, it's important to note that in doing this, the event, it equates to the savings of 273 trees, 64,200 kilowatts of energy, 48.15 cubic yards of landfill space, and 112,350 gallons of water. So certainly, an epic economic impact that we have when we do this twice a year. As we normally do, we have our emergency service providers partner with us in a rotating fashion. As mentioned, it was the White Marsh ambulance that was part of this, and the donations that are taken in are split between the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the White Marsh Community ambulance. It was mentioned that $990.27 was the donation. That includes the $90 that was a check made payable directly to the White Marsh Community Ambulance Association. Therefore, the check from the township will be $90.27, again totaling the $990.27. And we certainly thank the volunteers from the township staff, as well as those from the White Marsh Community ambulance for making it another successful shredding day event.
Excellent, yeah, we're very thankful. It's a great service, and it certainly has a positive impact in many different ways. Is there any board comment? Any public comment? No, we're good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Great. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number one for the hill at White Marsh, Phase 2, 4,000 Fox Hound Drive, in the amount of $1,173,926.56?
So moved. Second.
Turn this over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Chair Boyle-Nester. So start out by saying that the referenced amount in the motion is correct. We received the escrow release request from the developer's representative, Jeff Smuckler, and a representative from my office has visited the site to observe the improvements, and we have no issue with the requested release, and we would recommend that you move to releasing that amount. I would like to mention that we did receive some public comment on this agenda item from Bob Dantman, from the Planning Commission. My office has responded to Bob, but I wanted to, just for the benefit of everyone, sort of outline a few things that Bob had questions on. The first couple of questions were sort of related to how we process escrow releases. If there are six buildings proposed as part of this project, and only two are up, how come the recommendation for releases for roughly half of the escrow we're holding? So the, all the items in escrow are held and delineated in a tabulation, so they're not really related to how many buildings are built, it's related to how far along the site construction is. The main point of question was related to replacement trees. So the developer received a waiver to plant 100, 1 and 1/2 inch trees, where they would usually be required to plant 103 inch trees. The waiver was granted contingent on if they plant the trees early in construction, and we measure the total caliper inches at the final construction, they have to add up to 300 inches. So it would certainly behoove the developer to plant the trees early. So, it would certainly behoove the developer to plant the trees early to give them a chance to grow to the 300 inches. They haven't been planted yet, but we will not let them out of the escrow, we'll not close up the project until the 300 required caliper inches have been planted. Other than that, I think that general questions, I can see Bob's on this call, so if he has any questions, I'm sure he can answer them, or ask them, but we have responded, and that's just a general update.
So, Jim, are we releasing any funds related to the trees?
We are not.
Okay.
Are there any other board comments on this? Do we have any public comments? No. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, for giving the summary and for sharing Mr. Dantman's comments. I think that helps give everybody kind of an overview of how escrow works, but certainly specific to this project, and, you know, that we will be paying close attention to the trees, and as the project comes to a close, of course, making sure that everything's adhered to. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $2,25,710.40 and payroll totaling $622,124.24, and pension paid costs totaling $3,440.95 for February 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Toll and Supervisor Drauzner.
Good. Mr. Miller, any comments about that?
I do not have any comments, just that, obviously, why are we doing February's now? We do not have a meeting in March to do it, so that's why we are handling the approval this month.
Makes sense. Any other board comments? Any public comments come in? No. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? No, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $687,509.55 and payroll totaling $621,909.32, and pension paid costs totaling $10,458.24 for March 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so...
Okay. I have nothing further to add, Chair Nestor, unless there's any questions.
Thanks. Any board comments? And any public comments come in? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, now we're moving to the public comment period? And do we have any? No, okay. Any board member comments?
I would just like, J.C., you can go first, sorry.
No worries. So, I want to piggyback on what everyone has said, thanking the township staff, and thank you, first responders, thank you so much to all of you. I want to additionally thank Lisa Clancy, who is the library board director, and her staff for their continued performance with ongoing programs for children and so many other things, and relevant information they've been posting and putting out there. Really greatly appreciate it. I've seen wonderful things in the community through all of this, people supporting local businesses, supporting each other, and, you know, these, like we've all said, these are extraordinary times. So, thank you to everyone.
I'm just going to do the same thing and thank everybody as well. You know, we're all going through it, this is a very tough time, but happy holidays to everybody who is out there celebrating. Try to enjoy it the best you can, you know, Zoom and whatever you can do. Thanks to the first responders, thanks to our local businesses, thanks to our sanitation people, all those people who are keeping the township going. Please try to support our local businesses as well. I wanted to bring in my daughter Abby real fast, because we don't really get a time to bring in your kids to a meeting, but I'll have her slide, and she wants to say a quick thank you as well. So, here's Abby, White Marsh. Abby, say thank you to your teachers, at least.
I want to thank my teachers and first responders.
So, Abby says thank you, and she was trying to read a little more over the break, but she found a Netflix program that's in subtitles, so that's good. So, anyway, stay well, everybody, stay safe.
Is there any other?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask everyone to keep in their thoughts and prayers at this time of year, those that have been personally affected by the pandemic, those who are separated from their loved ones because they can't access the hospitals, and particularly those who have lost loved ones.
Thank you. And any other board comment?
Yeah, I would just, I would just, you know, on behalf of the Little League, of course, the president of Little League, it's been hard, you know, not having the kids outside, a lot of sacrifices all over the community, but I know I get a lot of emails and people stopping asking me. We've sent emails out to our parents, and, you know, we're still open to play this year. You can see I got the Williams Ford Field in the background here, so, you know, I hope people get outside, you can have a catch with your son, your daughter, or anyone in your house, you know, with your siblings, try to find some time to get outside as a family, you know, with proper social distancing, but at least spend that time together outside. So, thanks again to everyone for helping keep the township running, and, you know, some of the small businesses, thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, just in close, you know, these are, you know, truly unprecedented times, and everything we do, even if it means that you're just staying home, that matters, even though you may not feel that that has much of an impact. I know for myself, trying to keep a 20 and a 22-year-old home is very challenging, but, you know, it's critical, because it's not just about each of us, it's about individually, it's about all of us together, and we will get through this together, and I thank all of you for being here tonight, either virtually or through television. Reach out if we can do anything to help, please. I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session on Tuesday, April 7th, to discuss litigation, and it was also our practice Zoom, so that was helpful, so we have a little bit more of an idea of what we're doing here tonight. And that's all I have. Mr. Miller?
Just in closing, and I, nothing's perfect, you know, we're all trying to figure this out. If we have to do this again, we'll certainly, you know, based on feedback, we'll look to make improvements, we're not trying to do anything maliciously or anything, you know, and certainly talking to my colleagues, we're all going through these Zooms and watching each other's and trying to pick up some tips and so on, so we're trying to do our best, and we'll continue to improve as long as we have to, you know, handle meetings in this fashion. So, thank you, Chair Nestor.
Thank you. Excellent comments, yeah. It takes a lot of patience right now as well. Thank you, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good wishes to all of you, thank you, be safe.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.